Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Tuesday, July 24th, the year is 2001. It is now just after about 10:15 a.m. Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 a.m. We can be viewed on City View Channel 35. We can also be heard on Council Phone or viewed via webcast from the city's homepage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bertson, Glanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zein, and Padilla. Ten members present and in quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ridley, Thomas moves. Mr. Zein, seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Holden, seconds.
Mr. President, before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued. Item number nine, a request from the city attorney to continue that matter one day till July 25th.
Colleagues, request to continue item number nine for one day without objection. Item nine is continued.
Item number 13, at the request of Los Angeles Housing Department and Council District Six, this matter be remanded back to the Housing Department. Item number 13.
Item number 13, colleagues, without objection, that item is remanded.
Item number 20, a request from the city attorney to continue that matter until July 31st. That's a closed session item.
Item number 20, colleagues, request to continue without objection.
Item number 21, a request from the city administrative officer and EERC to continue that matter to August 15th. Item number 21.
Colleagues, item number 21, without objection, that will be continued.
Mr. President, that brings you to the regular agenda. Items number one through five are items noticed for public hearing.
These items have been noticed for public hearing for purposes of receiving comments from the public on items one through five. Until now, I have not received any requests for members of the public to speak on this item, so we shall open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Colleagues, any members wishing to speak on items one through five?
Mr. President, would you wish to hold the ordinances for three, four, and five on the desk until you have 12 members?
Let's do that. We do expect 12 members today. Items three, four, and five will be held on the desk, so we can vote on them when 12 members are present. Clerk, please open the roll on items one and two. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved.
Items number six through nine, excuse me, six through eight on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Number six is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold item six on the desk with the other ordinances. Item seven and eight remain before us. Public hearings have been held on those items. Mr. Holden calls item number seven special. Item number eight is before us. Any members wishing to speak on item number eight? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item eight is approved. Next item, please.
Items number 10 through 19 on the regular agenda, with the exception of number 13, are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Let's call item 18 special. There's a substitute motion being introduced. Let's hold items 10, 11, 12, and 17 on the desk with the remainder of the ordinances as well. Mr. Zein, you wish to speak on which item?
I'd like 14 special and 19 hold for two weeks.
Request to continue items 14 and 19?
No, 14 called special and 19 continue for two weeks.
Colleagues, request to continue item number 19 for two weeks. That would be August 7th. Without objection, item 19 is continued. And item 14 is called special by Councilmember Zein. I believe we have, yeah, we have cards on items number 10 and 12. Those are ordinances. We're holding them on the desk until one more member comes in, and we'll hear from the public on those items. What remains before us, Mr. Clerk?
Items 15, 16, and that's it, 15 and 16.
Is item 18 before us?
Number 18, there's a substitute motion being prepared.
So we're calling that special. Clerk, please open the roll on items 15 and 16. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item number 22 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Public hearing has been held on item number 22. This is an item that was continued from last Friday's agenda. Any members wishing to speak on item 22? Ms. Misakowski calls item 22 special. Next item, please.
That brings you back to item number seven, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Colleagues, item number seven is now before us. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I'd like to ask the staff a question.
Is staff here? I'll hold your time, Mr. Holden.
Thank you.
Mr. Janis?
Mr. President, members, today was the first time I got a copy of the franchise agreement. Did you distribute this agreement to the members of the city council? And if so, when and why did not receive one? It's a lot of pages.
Councilmember, the agreement was submitted to the city clerk from the clerk from the committee council. This was considered by the committee, Information Technology and General Services Committee.
Mr. President, members, I can speak that to vote one way or the other on this very, very important matter, which is going to give an agreement for 15 years to win first, provide the cable television. Another communication request is unthinkable to suggest that after requesting and receiving this franchise today, that I'm able with full knowledge of the contents to vote on it today or at any time. And, Mr. President, if they are to go forward with this, I know this is the second reading of the ordinance, I have no choice but to vote no. And just based on little that I know, maybe if I had an opportunity to read it, I would perhaps be convinced, but based on what I already know, number one, that WinFirst is not operational anywhere in the United States of America, nowhere. And then you're going to monitor its operations here locally every 60 days? Not likely. I can only suppose then therefore that the goal, objective of WinFirst, and that's why you didn't recommend them, you sent them here with no recommendation, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, you were hesitant, and so am I. Number one, they're not financially stable, and that was your reason for it. You didn't think they were financially stable, is that correct? They had something to do with their finances?
Terry Sauer, CEO. Mr. Holden, we reviewed that. We were asked to review the file and make a financial analysis. We weighed the issues in terms of the increased competition.
And you can answer this yes or no. If they're financially stable or capable, then you should say yes.
We felt that the issue was more of a policy decision for the council, and that's why we reported it without recommendations.
And the argument that the cable company WinFirst is using is one, that they can generate competition. And what I'm going to argue is that they will do anything else but generate competition. What they will do is get this franchise, and it's worth something once we sign off. And they will do in L.A. what they've done in other places, and that is to sell the franchise. And when they sell the franchise, maybe to someone who's already providing a service for us, they're more likely to want to buy it, then you don't have competition. They'll drive the others out of business, and they'll buy them out also. Instead of the prices going down, they will ultimately go up. So I can tell you, I can look and see what happened in Sacramento with the energy crisis. It's going to happen right here with cable television. And for those of us who are here today, even the young guys will be the old guard when you realize, when it's realized at that time, that what we did or doing here today is not in the best interest of the ratepayers as relates to cable TV here in the city of Los Angeles. I just, and I said last week that the, when they put the energy crisis developed by someone who just got there, most of them, same thing is happening here, I have no choice but to vote no. That is the ultimate consequences of our action today if we approve this franchise.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Misakowski?
I have a question, staff. When, as Mr. Holden has said, were this to be awarded, and then the company to whom the franchise is given sell it, what authority or what requirement is necessary? Does that franchisee in the sale of this franchise have to come back to the city council for approval on the transfer?
There's a provision in the franchise. Any subsequent sale or transfer would be subject to the approval of the city council.
Okay, well, that was what I had recalled in the earlier franchise agreements, and so I think that that is where Mr. Holden's concern in terms of someone coming forward to say that we want to sell or we're going to sell, and we would see that the person to whom it's sold is already, is in the market already, and so it would dilute or decrease competition. We could say no in terms of the continuation of the franchise in the city of L.A., is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, you were hesitant, and so am I. Number one, they're not financially stable, and that was your reason for it. You didn't think they were financially stable, is that correct? They had something to do with their finances?
Terry Sauer, CEO. Mr. Holden, we reviewed that. We were asked to review the file and make a financial analysis. We weighed the issues in terms of the increased competition.
And you can answer this yes or no. If they're financially stable or capable, then you should say yes.
We felt that the issue was more of a policy decision for the council, and that's why we reported it without recommendations.
And the policy decision would be therefore, the argument that the cable company WinFirst is using is one, that they can generate competition. And what I'm going to argue is that they will do anything else but generate competition. What they will do is get this franchise, and it's worth something once we sign off. And they will do in L.A. what they've done in other places, and that is to sell the franchise. And when they sell the franchise, maybe to someone who's already providing a service for us, they're more likely to want to buy it, then you don't have competition. They'll drive the others out of business, and they'll buy them out also. Instead of the prices going down, they will ultimately go up. So I can tell you, I can look and see what happened in Sacramento with the energy crisis. It's going to happen right here with cable television. And for those of us who are here today, even the young guys will be the old guard when you realize, when it's realized at that time, that what we did or doing here today is not in the best interest of the ratepayers as relates to cable TV here in the city of Los Angeles. I just, and I said last week that the, when they put the energy crisis was developed by someone who just got there, most of them, same thing is happening here, I have no choice but to vote no. That is the ultimate consequences of our action today if we approve this franchise.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Misakowski?
I have a question, staff. When, as Mr. Holden has said, were this to be awarded, and then the company to whom the franchise is given sell it, what authority or what requirement is necessary? Does that franchisee in the sale of this franchise have to come back to the city council for approval on the transfer?
There's a provision in the franchise. Any subsequent sale or transfer would be subject to the approval of the city council.
Okay, well, that was what I had recalled in the earlier franchise agreements, and so I think that that is where Mr. Holden's concern in terms of someone coming forward to say that we want to sell or we're going to sell, and we would see that the person to whom it's sold is already, is in the market already, and so it would dilute or decrease competition. We could say no in terms of the continuation of the franchise in the city of L.A., is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, you were hesitant, and so am I. Number one, they're not financially stable, and that was your reason for it. You didn't think they were financially stable, is that correct? They had something to do with their finances?
Terry Sauer, CEO. Mr. Holden, we reviewed that. We were asked to review the file and make a financial analysis. We weighed the issues in terms of the increased competition.
And you can answer this yes or no. If they're financially stable or capable, then you should say yes.
We felt that the issue was more of a policy decision for the council, and that's why we reported it without recommendations.
And the policy decision would be therefore, the argument that the cable company WinFirst is using is one, that they can generate competition. And what I'm going to argue is that they will do anything else but generate competition. What they will do is get this franchise, and it's worth something once we sign off. And they will do in L.A. what they've done in other places, and that is to sell the franchise. And when they sell the franchise, maybe to someone who's already providing a service for us, they're more likely to want to buy it, then you don't have competition. They'll drive the others out of business, and they'll buy them out also. Instead of the prices going down, they will ultimately go up. So I can tell you, I can look and see what happened in Sacramento with the energy crisis. It's going to happen right here with cable television. And for those of us who are here today, even the young guys will be the old guard when you realize, when it's realized at that time, that what we did or doing here today is not in the best interest of the ratepayers as relates to cable TV here in the city of Los Angeles. I just, and I said last week that the, when they put the energy crisis was developed by someone who just got there, most of them, same thing is happening here, I have no choice but to vote no. That is the ultimate consequences of our action today if we approve this franchise.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Misakowski?
I have a question, staff. When, as Mr. Holden has said, were this to be awarded, and then the company to whom the franchise is given sell it, what authority or what requirement is necessary? Does that franchisee in the sale of this franchise have to come back to the city council for approval on the transfer?
There's a provision in the franchise. Any subsequent sale or transfer would be subject to the approval of the city council.
Okay, well, that was what I had recalled in the earlier franchise agreements, and so I think that that is where Mr. Holden's concern in terms of someone coming forward to say that we want to sell or we're going to sell, and we would see that the person to whom it's sold is already, is in the market already, and so it would dilute or decrease competition. We could say no in terms of the continuation of the franchise in the city of L.A., is that correct?
That's correct. There's no exception to that provision. Any, any subsequent transfer to any party for any reason would be subject to the council's approval.
Right, okay. Then now, I think, is the safeguard in the whole, that they have to come back to us, and if this is meant to be diluting and not increasing competition, which is, I think, the merit and the reason it's being put forward as a policy decision to allow choice, to allow our constituents who sometimes are only served by the one franchisee and having problems with that, that this will give them the choice. It's the heart of the market of competition, and that's why I believe with that safeguard is indicated that they can't, if there's a sale, it has to come back to the city for that consideration, that I am comfortable with this and recommending approval.
Mr. Holden?
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski, what you say is true, however, you won't be here. They'll come in and they'll cry hardship, and they will plead, make their plea to the council. The council will say, yes, it's a hardship, therefore, we can transfer, transfer the sale agreement. And it'll happen.
We can vote on them when 12 members are present. Clerk, please open the roll on items one and two. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Items number six through nine, excuse me, six through eight on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Number six is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that on the desk? Let's hold item six on the desk with the other ordinances. Items seven and eight remain before us. Public hearings have been held on those items. Mr. Holden calls item number seven special. Item number eight is before us. Any members wishing to speak on item number eight? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item eight is approved. Next item, please.
Items number 10 through 19 on the regular agenda, with the exception of number 13, are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Let's call item 18 special. There's a substitute motion being introduced. Let's hold items 10, 11, 12, and 17 on the desk with the remainder of the ordinances as well. Mr. Zine, you wish to speak on which item?
I'd like 14 special and 19 hold for two weeks.
Request to continue? Items 14 and 19?
No, 14 called special. And 19, continue for two weeks.
Colleagues, request to continue item number 19 for two weeks. That would be August 7th. Without objection, item 19 is continued. And item 14 is called special by Councilmember Zine. I believe we have, uh, yeah, we have cards on items number 10 and 12. Those are ordinances. We're holding them on the desk until one more member comes in and we'll hear from the public on those items. What remains before us, Mr. Clerk?
Items 15, 16. And that's it, 15 and 16.
Is item 18 before us?
Uh, number 18, there's a substitute motion being prepared.
So we're calling that special. Clerk, please open the roll on items 15 and 16. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item number 22 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Public hearing has been held on item number 22. This is an item that was continued from last Friday's agenda. Any members wishing to speak on item 22? Ms. Misakowski calls item 22 special. Next item, please.
That brings you back to item number seven, called special. By Councilmember Holden.
Colleagues, item number seven is now before us. The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I'd like to ask the staff a question.
Is staff here? I'll hold your time, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, today was the first time I got a copy of the franchise agreement. Did you distribute this agreement to the members of the City Council? And if so, when and why did I receive one? It's a lot of pages.
Councilmember, the agreement was submitted to the city clerk from the clerk from the committee council. This was considered by the committee, Information Technology and General Services Committee.
Mr. President, members, I can speak that to vote one way or the other on this very, very important matter, which is going to give an agreement for 15 years to win first, provide the table cable television. Another communication request is unthinkable to suggest that after requesting and receiving this franchise today, that I'm able with full knowledge of the contents to vote on it today or at any time. And, Mr. President, if they are to go forward with this, I know this is the second reading of the ordinance, I have no choice but to vote no. And just based on little that I know, maybe if I had an opportunity to read it, I would perhaps be convinced. But based on what I already know, number one, that WinFirst is not operational anywhere in the United States of America. Nowhere. And then you're going to monitor its operations here locally every 60 days? Not likely. I can only suppose then therefore that the goal, objective of WinFirst, and that's why you didn't recommend them, you sent them here with no recommendation, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, you were hesitant and so am I. Number one, they're not financially stable and that was your reason for, you didn't think they were financially stable, is that correct? They had something to do with their finances?
Terry Sauer, CIO. Mr. Holden, we reviewed that, we were asked to review the file and make a financial analysis. We weighed the issues in terms of the increased competition.
And you can answer this yes or no, did you find that if they're financially stable, capable, then you should say yes?
We felt that the issue was more of a policy decision for the council and that's why we forwarded without recommendation.
And the policy decision would be therefore, the argument that the cable company, WinFirst, is using is one, that they can generate competition. And what I'm going to argue is that they will do anything else but generate competition. What they will do is get this franchise and it's worth something once we sign off. And they will do in LA what they've done in other places, and that is to sell the franchise. And when they sell the franchise, maybe to someone who's already providing a service for us, they're more likely to want to buy it, then you don't have competition. They'll drive the others out of business and they'll buy them out also. Instead of the prices going down, they will ultimately go up. So I can tell you, I can look and see what happened in Sacramento with the energy crisis, it's going to happen right here with cable television. And for those of us who are here today, even the young guys will be the old guard when you realize, when it's realized at that time, that what we did or doing here today is not in the best interest of the ratepayers as relates to cable TV here in the city of Los Angeles. I just, and I said last week that the, when they put, the energy crisis was developed by someone who just got there, most of them, same thing is happening here, I have no choice but to vote no. That is the ultimate consequences of our action today if we approve this franchise.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Misakowski?
I have a question, staff. When, as Mr. Holden has said, were this to be awarded and then the company to whom the franchise is given sell it, what authority or what requirement is necessary? Does that franchisee in the sale of this franchise have to come back to the City Council for approval on the transfer?
There's a provision in the franchise, any subsequent sale or transfer would be subject to the approval of the City Council.
Okay, well, that was what I had recalled in the earlier franchise agreements. And so I think that that is where Mr. Holden's concerned in terms of someone coming forward to say that we want to sell or we're going to sell. And we would see that the person to whom it's sold is already, is in the market already and so it would dilute or decrease competition. We could say no in terms of the continuation of the franchise in the city of LA, is that correct?
That's correct. There's no exception to that provision. Any subsequent transfer to any party for any reason would be subject to the council's approval.
Right, okay. Then now I think is the safeguard in the whole, that they have to come back to us. And if this is meant to be diluting and not increasing competition, which is I think the merit and the reason it's being put forward as a policy decision to allow choice, to allow our constituents who sometimes are only served by the one franchisee and having problems with that, that this will give them the choice, it's the heart of the market of competition. And that's why I believe with that safeguard is indicated that they can't, if there's a sale, it has to come back to the city for that consideration. That I am comfortable with this and recommending approval.
Mr. Holden?
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski, what you say is true, however, you won't be here. They'll come in and they'll cry hardship and they will plead, make their plea to the council. The council will say, yes, it's a hardship, therefore we can transfer, transfer the sale agreement. And it'll happen. If you were to include an amendment in this franchise that says you cannot sell until you're fully operational, 17 years from now, two years operational, would they accept that amendment? I don't think so. Which means then the council, and at that time say it's working, there is a hardship, it's a legitimate one, and therefore we can analyze it, you have a right to sell it. And we will sign off on it. They're buying a right to provide cable TV citywide and it's worth something, they'll sell the right before the construction is completed. And once they put, they only got $880,000 and they have franchises throughout the United States of America, how are they going to finance those? We talked about that in my office. They don't have enough money to finance those franchises and this one, am I right? Did you tell me that?
That is correct. They currently have $829 million and will have to obtain additional financing.
That's right. So what you also told me, they're going to put LA first, no way. The other community is going to be saying the same thing, put us first. This is a right to provide television, cable TV citywide, and they're going to sell the right. Simple as that. I mean, it's, and coming back to us, we came back on the taxicab franchises, to sell them off. Biggest fraud in the city of Los Angeles. Taxi franchises, what they did. So I voted no. I voted no in the airport, 14 to 1. I voted no in the library, 14 to 1. And your list can go on 14 to 1. But you know what? In the end, the one won out. The library was not sold. The $30 million had to be returned to the airport and the list goes on.
You were not here at the time. Ms. Hahn?
I don't know, maybe it'll be 14 to 2 today. My concerns, the more I think about this, clearly a financial stability of the company, but I agree with my colleague, Councilman Holden, that in 15 years, you know, and again, my district is the last district to have the build-out, I think in 15 years, it'll probably have changed hands three or four times. I look at my own cable company, within five years, it was Cox Cable, then it became Media One, now it's AT&amp;T Broadband. And still no choice for the people in my community on what cable company we're allowed to choose from. I have a real concern with the 15-year build-out and what guarantees we have by the end of that, that this company will still be in business and that indeed they will continue building out throughout the whole city. I'm interested in this $29 billion bond, million dollar bond. Is that a lump sum? Is that broken up year by year? Is there an opportunity to get the majority of that upfront in this contract? And how does that work?
The bond is incremental. As I understand it, it's a $29 million bond. The number, the first amount posted will be 2.9 million. It will increase incrementally as the work increases. The current, as I understand it, and I would have to defer to ITA, the contract doesn't provide for the payment of the bond upfront.
When does the 29 become totally paid?
I believe 10 years into construction.
Keep in mind, Councilmember, this is a performance bond. They don't pay any money to us, they post the bond with us. And then if there should be a default in the performance of the contract, we would then be able to call that bond. And the total amount of the bond would be $29 million. That would be an amount available to fix whatever problems had been caused by the company as a result of its breach of the contract. And I just would-
But after five years, for instance, say, things fell apart and streets were torn up and their performance was such that we had to call in that bond, at five years, what would we be able to call in?
At five years, you would have, it increases in a total amount over 10 years. So at five years, you'd have 50% of 29 million, which would be about 14 and a half million.
I understand that they are, currently, WinFirst has got a contract in Sacramento. And have they begun building out that system?
The Sacramento construction project is underway at this time.
Do we have, do we have reports from Sacramento so far on the relationship with the applicant and how it's going?
We did have some discussions with Sacramento about that. They've had the normal construction headaches that are involved in building any utility system. They haven't yet turned down a customer in Sacramento, so we don't really know about their customer performance yet. I might add that, as we briefed Mr. Holden last week, the company has, is run by partners who originally owned Frontier Vision, which is a 700,000 cable subscriber system, which was sold out to Adelphia. So the people who run this company are familiar with how to run cable systems.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hahn. Your time has expired. The Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla. Members, I remind you, this is the second reading of the ordinance. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had this discussion a week ago. And I believe we made the arguments a week ago about the legal considerations and the analysis that city staff does, the technological considerations and the analysis that our city staff does, and the financial considerations and the analysis that our staff does. The CIO had the opportunity to recommend against this, but they didn't. They said no recommendation. They gave the council the opportunity to establish a policy here. And it's not just a policy question of whether or not we'd move forward with granting a franchise to this company, but the policy question of whether or not the council can finally bring competition to the cable industry within the city of Los Angeles. Yes, there is a little bit of risk involved. There was a risk involved when we granted franchises to the incumbent operators. But you know what? With all the challenges and sometimes complaints that we get from subscribers about their cable system, at least we have a cable system to work with. And competition, because we're all human beings, may not be perfect in five and in 10 years from now, but we will have competition and we'll continue to work to fine tune it and refine it to the benefit of the residents and the other subscribers within the city of Los Angeles. Now, I won't rehash all the arguments and statement I made last week about why I support this franchise agreement. I want to focus specifically for a second on an argument, Mr. Holden, with all due respect, that you made just a few minutes ago, trying to call the attention to the new members. And it almost sounds like maybe you're the one trying to pull the wool over their eyes. The argument about, oh, we can't go forward with this franchise agreement because once you, once you award a second franchise, then you're going to scare off the third and the fourth as hogwash. Because at some point, we do need a second operator. And whether it's WinFirst or any other company, somebody's got to be the second one in place. Somebody's got to be the first to offer that competition. And we hope that the third and the fourth come into the market. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But no matter who it is, trying to become the second operator in the city, you can make that argument. So colleagues, it is a risk, it is a bold step that we're taking. But the question to ask yourself today is, do we or do we not want to begin the process of bringing competition of cable service to every community in the city of Los Angeles? I believe we should, and I will vote yes in order to do so. And I hope you do as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holden?
Do the person of privilege come before the next speaker? I think it does.
It does not in this instance. Mr. Holden, you're the next speaker. Mr. Garcetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As one of the new guys that Mr. Holden referred to, I do very much believe in the idea of competition. I think it's important for all of us that ever use cable to make sure that there are choices out there. And I appreciate some of the arguments that you brought up. I don't think that it's the same analogy, though, with deregulation of electricity. I would vote against this if today we were earning in the city, the public, all of the profits from the existing cable system. But we don't. Those are in private hands. So that analogy doesn't quite hold because it's not that it's being taken away from the public trust and somehow being given to the corporations. It already is in the hands of corporations, but in each region in monopolies, which if we are going to enter into a system of private enterprise, is the worst sort. We have seen this in some ways play out with deregulation with electricity here in this state by creating those sorts of market forces which are negative. This begins to unleash the sort of market forces we want to see. If you can arrange for a way for us to take over and make all the cable systems something that the city owns, sure, I'll vote against this. But in the meantime, I welcome the competition.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holden?
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Padilla, by no means am I trying to influence the new council persons. I'm only trying to state what I consider to be a fact. For the person of privilege, Mr. Padilla, not one of us, and I've been here for 14 years, would ever say nor would we believe that a member of the council would try to pull the wool over the eyes of anyone, new or old council person. What I said is this, that at the time that you would perhaps consider a sales transaction, the new council persons then would be considered the old guard. I've been here 14 years and I've seen the cycle where they come up and they say, well, the council has to approve the transfer, the council has to approve the transfer. Ask the staff how many times the council approved the sale of a franchise for cable TV? It just, and they say it's got to be done today. Sometimes they'll come and give you just two or three days' notice. And if you don't do it that day, well, you're going to lose out on something. It happens over and over again. And that's not pulling the wool over anyone's eye, that's a matter of fact. And I'm saying when this company, WinFirst, we lose less, but WinFirst, okay, come before you and say, nah, hopefully they'll do it during your lifetime as a council person and not when you're gone. And then you'll say, well, I do remember a talk like that. Because that's exactly what's going to happen. They get the rights and then they sell. And this is no different. And that's not putting the wool over anyone's eyes, that's just our eyes, it's just stating the fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. I think it'd be useful to say that no council member has successfully pulled the wool over the eyes of the entire body. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
I wasn't going to speak after Nate, but, no, no, I'm going to let it go. Okay. First of all, the main consideration that we need to think about is the public. We need to think about what is going to benefit the public, what is going to be in their best interest. And too many times, we think in terms of protecting this company or whatever. Competition is a great thing. And that's what this country is based upon, is competition, free enterprise. So I presume that the bid that we have is the best one that's been examined and everything. Sure, it can be sold, but that's the nature of any business, it can be sold. The main thing is that the conditions that are imposed on this award of this franchise go with the franchise. And whoever may buy it are going to have to be, number one, approved by this council or whatever council may be there. I probably won't be here, I know I won't be here, some of us won't. But in the future, franchises do change hands and we have the power to approve them and make sure that the terms and the conditions are kept intact. So I think that we're really looking, Mr. Holden, you and I are dinosaurs here, we're looking at a new wave. And these people have a vision and we have to respect that. I think that the city is changing, technology is changing. And I think from what I saw of this particular offer, it looks like it's going to be something that will benefit the city in the long, in long term. It's going to be a lot, done a lot better than the previous ones were done when all the streets were torn up. This is going to be a hole that is, and there'd be a tunneling with an instrument so that all the streets are not torn up in order to put it in place. It's going to be a lot nicer aesthetically and it's going to offer a service that's going to be beneficial to the public. So I think that we need to move forward with it. And I think that we need to always, regardless of how many years you and I have been here, we need to look at people who come in with a fresh look and a fresh vision. And I think that that vision, I think is a good vision. I think it's, it's good for things not to be too entrenched and not to be too set in a mold where you think you only got to go one way. And I welcome that approach and I think that we ought to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am not so worried that this is going to change hands because if we look at why cable has not had competition, it's often because of the immense cost of laying down the infrastructure. If in two or three years they wanted to flip this, whoever wants to take up that franchise still has to build this incredible infrastructure, to get the financing for that, do all of that. So there's really no incentive to do that. And if this infrastructure does get completed, at that point, the changing of hands of franchises happens all the time. And so that's less of a worry for me.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Mr. Chair, do you wish to close? Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm glad these questions were once again raised and I believe to most people's comfort level answered today. It described about the historic step we can take today, even with taking a little bit of a risk. That's what it takes sometimes to bring competition into an industry. And this industry in particular, cable operations in the city of Los Angeles. To clarify, I wanted to make sure that my comments earlier, and I appreciate Mr. Holden's clarification, were specifically to the argument of whether or not we'd be scaring off future competitors. It's always going to be the case, but we always had to take that first step and that's what we're doing today. It's a historic opportunity. I want to thank the staff for their work, their diligent work in negotiating the agreement up to the point of what's in it today. And to ensure, colleagues, that we always have that safeguard of having the authority to approve or disapprove sales or transfers of these franchises. So with those safeguards in place, with the analysis and all the conditions within the agreement in place, I feel comfortable recommending approval and I ask for your eye vote.
All right, thank you very much. That exhausts the speakers list. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, two noes.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items number three through five are being held on the desk are ordinances. You now have 14 members. Do you wish to consider those?
Let's take items three through five. Those items have been noted for public hearing. Public hearing was opened and closed, still no request from the public to speak on those items. Any members wishing to speak on items three through five? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Mr. President, item number six is also an ordinance that's held on the desk. It's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Any members wishing to speak on item number six? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Also, ordinances being held on the desk are numbers 10 through 12 and 17. We have cards on items number 10 and 12. Let's take a vote on item number 17. Any members wishing to speak on item 17? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Let's take item number 10 first and then we have a number of cards on item number 12. Item number 10 is before us. The council calls forward Jerry Tintel.
Yes, Jerry, Council President and Council of LA. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this morning. I'm Jerry Tintel, right-of-way supervisor for Tosco Refining Company. I'm here on behalf of our common care subsidiary, Union Pipeline Company, and request your favorable vote on a new franchise for Union Pipeline Company. If you have any questions, we're here in force to respond to anything of concern to you at this time.
Thank you. Any members wishing to speak on item number 10? Both 10 and 11 are related, so let's take those items together. Comments pertain to both items. Clerk, please open the roll on items 10 and 11. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those items are approved. Fourth with on those items. Item number 12 is now before us. We have a number of cards on item number 12. Let's begin by calling forward Monica Yamada, to be followed by Chris Shabel.
I'm Monica Yamada, and I'm Vice President of CIM Group, and I'm speaking on support of the Hollywood Entertainment Bid. We invested in six properties along the boulevard and feel that it is important for us to have a unified organization that would assist in the security and the maintenance of the district. So we're very much in favor and ask for your support in the continuation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chris Shabel, to be followed by John Milliken.
Good morning. I represent about four property owners, and one of them sent a letter, which I've handed out, and two were on vacation, and one is here. I thought that when my kids were grown up, my parenting ended, but surprise, it does not. And apparently, with a city council, the same is true. If you don't watch to, if you don't watch to, I'm sorry, if you don't watch it, like children, they need to be reminded of rules and regulations. This motion was sent to committee last Tuesday. The committee has not met, and only one person alone signed the committee to fast-track it to city council. No ordinary members were there, but, I better put my glasses on. I can't see what I'm saying here. I won't start from the beginning, I promise.
If I can ask you to...
That's better.
Wrap it up, please.
This motion was sent to committee last Tuesday. The committee has not met, and only one committee member signed to fast-track it to city council. No ordinary members of the bid were informed, and they were denied to give input, and so were the public. Therefore, I question the legality of this hearing. My request that Gower and Yaka be taken out of the bid. Earlier this year, these members were taken out of the bid by vote. However, the following month, the board meeting was changed, and the whole board came to the committee, voted all the affected owners back into the bid. Both Yaka and Gower are only one side of the street. They had never done that before or since. Jackie Goldberg also said that within a year, they could get out of the bid. That, that year is up. Do the right thing and take these people out of the bid. They're not affected at all by the tourists, and they don't receive the cleaning and the security cards for which they pay.
If I could ask you to conclude, ma'am, please.
Yes, you are here to protect the small as well as the powerful. The powerful can pay to have people speak for them, but who speaks for the man on the street but you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Milliken, to be followed by Bernard Franklin.
Good morning. Can the city council also read my tabloid here? I'll just put it down here. Get on with the business. We have a small property on Gower. It's a small auto repair garage. I've been there 25 years. Gower is on the fringe of this bid, and we're being taxed, but we don't get any of the benefit. We're not a tourist street. We're strictly a business street, and we're asking to be let out of the bid. We're at 1617 North Gower. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard Franklin, to be followed by Pietra Dubuklet.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Bernard Franklin. I own a major property near Hollywood and Vine. Thank you for having me speak today. I am talking on behalf of several property owners. We were actually voted out of the Business Improvement District last January because we felt we were not getting the benefits commensurate to our assessments under three votes under the steering committee by Joel Fisher, who's here today. And then the city council, the Board of Directors voted us back in again. Since February, I've become very active now, trying to have the, our Business Improvement District in Hollywood confirm, support the various ethical aspects of bids. We have been involved in a lawsuit, as you're probably well aware, over the past two years to have the bids open to the public. Our bid was not open to any of the stockholders or property owners for the first four years of its existence, with the encouragement of Jackie Goldberg, who founded the bid five years ago, and also Steve Allman, who was our president for three years, and Carrie Morrison, our administrator since the onset of the bid.
If I could ask you to conclude, please?
Because of one of the stock, one of the landowners filed a lawsuit. You probably have been following this. The appellate court upheld the decision that these were legislative bodies subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act in December. They appealed this, and in March, this became even a stronger statement by the appellate court that they are legislative bodies subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act. Because of this, Jackie Goldberg, who, as you know, became an assembly person on January 1st, submitted a bill February 8th to the Assembly, AB 1021, which was trying to make this not subject to the Brown Act. We fought this, we fought this, and Mike Benot worked out a compromise that this is now a private nonprofit corporation, however, subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act and the Public Records Act.
Thank you very much. You made your point.
This passed unanimously in the courts and signed by Gray Davis yesterday.
Thank you. Ms. Dubuklet?
There's one point I want to make, which is that there's two things missing from the controls of our bid, which I think is a rogue bid, and that is conflict of interest statements and open bidding. And you all have a letter from Ralph, Rick Tuttle, on June 29th stating that conflict of interest statements should be definitely signed by all bids.
Okay. You've made your points well.
The only one that was unopened.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Dubuklet, to be followed by Joel Fisher.
Good morning. I'm Pietra Dubuklay. I'm Senior Vice President of Marangoff Equities. We own four buildings in Hollywood, and we own, three of the buildings are within the BID area. We are also the largest office building landlord in Hollywood. We support the bid, and we were part and instrumental in starting the bid. We know what has happened throughout the years, and through the hard work of the majority of the property owners, we've seen Hollywood revitalized. The streets are cleaner, the streets are safer, and Hollywood is a place for people to come, visit, work, and play. So we, again, we need to continue the momentum, and we urge your support in the continuation of the bid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Joel Fisher, to be followed by Carrie Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I'm Joel Fisher from the Hollywood Palace, and for the past 10 months, Chair of the Steering Committee Renewal Committee of the Bid, for the Business Improvement District. Nice to see some old faces and old friends here, as well as some of the new faces. In that time that I was Chair of the Steering Committee, we did a lot of internal work on the renewal of the bid. It was the consensus of the majority of the organizations involved as property owners that the bid continue. We'd like it to go to the next stage, which is what's before you right now, and take it to the public hearing sections, which would be after passing of the ordinance, which is before you now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker will be Carrie Morrison.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Morrison, and I'm the Executive Director of the Hollywood Entertainment District Property Owners Association. And I would just like to express that for the past year, a group of very dedicated property owners have been meeting, they've held about 20 meetings over the course of nine months, working very hard to address the concerns and issues of all the people who are being served by the bid and prospectively would be served by the bid. I will tell you that with respect to some of the boundary streets that you heard referenced a few minutes ago, that the steering committee forming this bid actually elected to drop their assessment to 60% of the full commercial assessment to reflect that some people are located on boundary areas. There was an incredible outreach made, focus groups, surveys, one-on-one discussions, to try to make sure that in the second iteration of the Hollywood Entertainment District, that we would be able to kind of perfect and, and be more focused in the services that are delivered. I feel confident the steering committee has worked very hard to seek the support of their property owners. They received over 60% of the signatures. And anytime you form an organization like this, there's always going to be those who will have problems, and the leaders in the community will work very hard to try to address those concerns in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on this item. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's nice to see so many friends here, speaking both for and against this. Democracy and efficiency are never easy bedfellows. Certainly, getting things done and improving neighborhoods sometimes does not lend itself to democratic enterprise. And so I do rise today to hammer home two messages. One, about the importance of people being able to come together and to improve their neighborhoods and business districts, but to also praise the work that you've done to make sure this is done in a more democratic way. It's something that has emanated out of Hollywood, and I know that's a difficult thing sometimes for folks to hear who are more interested in the efficiency side, but I think we have nothing to fear from open meetings. We all have to do conflict of interest statements. Things like that are going to be important steps. Ownerless sometimes, but this is the cost of democracy. There will always be hiccups along the way as well about some people who want to opt out, and I praise the work that was done in terms of reaching out within the community, and I know that that will never feel as good to some as it does to many. But I do rise in support of the renewal. This is renewal today, and I appreciate what you're saying, Chris, about the fact that this went through committee quickly. As a renewal, I'm more comfortable with that. We do need to make sure that we keep a careful eye, and that this is something that stays, that all bids stay as democratically open as possible, and that we make sure they fall into the same sort of guidelines that good government does. Quasi-governmental institutions are important in improving neighborhoods, but they shouldn't come at the price of democracy, and I praise you for the work you've done to make sure that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Pacheco, keep the roll open.
I just, Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to raise at this point that during the debate on the Hollywood bids, there was the open question, an issue that we may want to think about citywide, as to what rate should nonprofit property owners be charged in all of our bids. We have right now, on a case-by-case basis, of how we allow each bid to sort of deal with that, and we need to think about this in the long term. As bids become more and more popular, do we want to have a standardized rate for nonprofits that are nonprofit property owners in all our bids? So I just wanted to raise that as an open policy question that we should start thinking about. And otherwise, I'm in support of what's before us.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item 12 is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 14 called special by Councilmember Zein.
Item 14 is now before us. Mr. Zein? Mr. Zein, you called item number 14 special?
Mr. President, I did have a question on that, and it's been resolved by staff. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 18 called special by Councilmember Weiss for a substitute motion. I believe it has been distributed to the council.
Did you wish to speak, Mr. Weiss? The chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a substitute motion relating to the manner in which the city processes and deals with the phenomenon of movie premieres and associated events in Westwood. It's a matter that has been of great concern to many residents and businesses in the Westwood area, and the Entertainment Industry Development Corporation does have the ability, I believe, at least preliminarily, to deal with this problem in a more effective way than certain city agencies are dealing with it now. At the same time, the city has a long-term task force that's dealing with these issues that's going to come up with long-term solutions that probably will have, or hopefully will have applicability throughout the city. But for temporary purposes in Westwood, it's important that we get a handle on this problem, and that's the purpose of this motion. I was very pleased recently that I had the opportunity to bring together all the parties that are relevant to this issue, not just the folks in Westwood, not just the EIDC, but the Department of Transportation in the city, the city attorney's office, the CLA, the CAO. And we all agreed that this, this is a good temporary measure that really moves the ball forward, and I'd ask for your support. Thanks.
That substitute motion has been distributed?
It's been, it's been distributed, yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other members wishing to speak? Substitute motion 18 is now before us. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 22 on the continuation agenda called special by Councilmember Miskowski.
Item 22 is before us, colleagues. Public hearing has been held in committee on this item. Ms. Miskowski?
I would just like to have the staff come forward and again, present the case. It's the issue of what we have in front of us here on the floor. I would also like the staff to distinguish, if you can, the Planning and Public Works Committee report. It seems to me that the Public Works Committee report was the more recent action, and it does require that the Bureau of Street Services and CLA report back to the city council before the final agreement is taken, and I think that's probably appropriate. And just let me know if there's anything else in here of any substantive difference between the two reports, other than Public Works being the latter action.
Yeah, I...
As staff prepares, let me also acknowledge that there have been public comment cards submitted on this item, public comment, and the public hearing was held in committee. So short of a motion by a member to reopen the public hearing, public hearing has been held.
Point of, may I just respond to Ms. Miskowski's request on, because it was in our committee as what the differences were? Yes, we agreed to adopt all of the recommendations of the Plum Committee. We added that it had come back to the council for final approval. But the one thing, the additional thing that we added in of significance on a recent trip that I took, one of the things that was most impressive to me was the possibility of using these computer terminals in the neighborhoods adjacent to, for example, bus shelters and all, that provide an incredible amount of information, that are exactly the kind of information we want for the neighborhood councils, the agendas of the meetings, the council issues, the neighborhood groups, everything, all the official government agendas, the committees, the council, the community, an ability to interact with the community where people at bus shelters can be interacting with their council offices, with the neighborhood councils. It could be an incredibly effective tool. And so we added that the departments, along with neighborhood, Department of Neighborhoods and the council committee and all dealing with neighborhood councils, be involved in including within the overall program a sufficient number of these terminals that can really provide us an extra benefit that we hadn't contemplated when this first went out. And it's an exceptional possibility and an opportunity. So one of the things that's added in is that that be included in the negotiations to come back with the program, and it could be exactly what the neighborhood councils have been looking for, in terms of providing access and information and interactivity in a lot of the neighborhoods of the city.
Thank you. Let's move to the staff presentation.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Ozawa from the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. What is before you today are reports from your Plum and Public Works Committees regarding the selection of a contractor for the Coordinated Street Furniture Program. Your committees recommend adoption of the Board of Public Works and CLA recommendation that the Bureau of Street Services and the CLA negotiate a 20-year agreement with Infinity Deco LLC, and that if an agreement can't be reached within 60 days, that staff be instructed to negotiate with AdShell Inc. Infinity Deco and AdShell were the two respondents to the city's RFP. Both of your committees agreed with the following negotiation points. Number one, providing funding for dedicated city inspectors to enforce contract provisions, regular maintenance, and other regulations pertaining to the... regular maintenance, and other regulations pertaining to the placement, use, and operation of street furniture. Number two, ensure that all street furniture advertising is in compliance with applicable specific plan and historic district area guidelines. The final contract shall include sufficient flexibility to allow for the control of the quantity of street furniture advertising in accordance with specific or community plan requirements or other applicable standards. Number three, include input from the local community on street furniture style and color to maximize street furniture consistency with the surrounding community. Number four, prohibit all freestanding advertising. Number five, resolve First Amendment issues regarding display rights and other related newsstand issues through discussions with the news publishing industry. And six, include collective bargaining provisions for street furniture employees. Your Public Works Committee went on to include another recommendation that the following, let's see, that the Bureau of Street Services and CLA report back to council on the coordination, negotiation, and cost of computer information terminals and kiosks with the following departments, the needs of neighborhood councils through the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, the placement of terminals in certain city facilities through the Department of General Services, and technology issues with Information Technology Agency. Therefore, staff recommends that the Public Works Committee be adopted today, since it includes all of the Plum recommendations, in addition to the last recommendation that I just read. The Coordinated Street Furniture Program will provide 2,500 transit shelters, 150 automated self-cleaning toilets, trash and recycling receptacles, newsstand vendor and advertising kiosks, computer information terminals, and community information panels. In addition, the Infinity Deco revenue sharing proposal guarantees a minimum of 150 million over 20 years to the city, and that minimum would be adjusted according to the CPI. An evaluation panel rated the proposals utilizing the following criteria: past performance on contracts of similar size and scope, compensation package, proposed program for Los Angeles, maintenance and service plan, and financial stability of the firm. The Board of Public Works recommended negotiation with Infinity Deco following a review of documents related to European legal actions, which J.C. Deco has been a party, brought to the board's attention by Adshell Inc. Adshell further requested the board to declare Infinity Deco a non-responsible bidder due to allegedly incorrectly answering the city's bidder responsibility questionnaire with regard to prior convictions related to bidding. The board first heard this matter at its June 8 meeting and ultimately continued this matter for two weeks to allow staff an opportunity to review evidence submitted by both Adshell and Infinity Deco. In the interim, the city attorney retained outside counsel specializing in international law to determine, among other things, whether a February 2000 conviction in Bordeaux, France, is not a conviction on the record until all appeals are exhausted, and whether the issues in that case would be considered a crime under United States or California law. O'Melvyn and Myers was retained by the city attorney to review and advise on French and Belgian legal actions and determine that the alleged J.C. Deco conviction in Bordeaux, France, is not a conviction inasmuch as it is on appeal and does not, under French law, become a conviction until all appeals are exhausted. Therefore, Infinity Deco correctly answered the city's bidder responsibility questionnaire, and the Board of Public Works found Infinity Deco to be a responsible bidder. At the conclusion of negotiation of an agreement, staff will report back to council with recommended actions to implement this program. Areas of negotiation may include designs, maintenance, and service schedules, automatic self-cleaning toilet features, and advertising strategy.
Thank you. Any other staff members wishing to make statements?
Just like, Mr. President, members of the council, clarify two issues. One is on the news racks, is that the only provision that we will include in this contract is the ability to purchase. The deployment of that will be subject to future negotiations with the newspaper industry and coming back to council. And in 60 days, we may not have the actual contract completed, but we will have the basics of the agreement to come back to council, just so there's not a false expectation that every T will be crossed and every I dotted.
Anyone else? Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I simply wanted to highlight the fact that roughly a little over a year ago is when Councilmember Walters and myself introduced the motion to really bring about a modern or current solution to the need, the needs of our homeless population here in the downtown community. We had been basically dealing with these porta-potties, which we're dealing with right now, which have a lot of secondary issues, and the advocates for the homeless community really felt that we were behind the times in dealing with this basic human need, and that it got to the point where at one point in our discussion of the criminalizing urinating in public, that we actually postponed that motion till we got this online. So I'm really excited about the fact that we're on the verge of putting online a program to assist our homeless community and to really give them a decent way of taking care of themselves on the streets. And so at this juncture, I want to take this opportunity, if it's not a part of the staff report, I want to move that when we look at which areas should first receive these automated public toilets, that we prioritize areas that have a high concentration or a known community of homeless as our top priority, because I think we really need to start there and build out from that starting point. So I'd like to make that motion at this point, when we start discussing where our priorities should be for the public toilets. Thank you.
Mr. Burnson?
Yes, I just have one comment, and I think Mr. Deaton has addressed it, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. This was part of the action of the, that was not included in the committee report, but this was an action that the committee unanimously took and add to the report. And it's consistent, and this is a proposed motion relative to the modular news racks. Consistent with the recommendation of the Planning and Land Use Committee, I move the modular news racks be excluded from negotiations between the city and Infinity Deco or any other bidder for the Coordinated Street Furniture Plan contract. Modular news racks are only a minuscule portion of the street furniture plan, raise significant legal issues, and should be the subject of separate discussions between the representatives of the city and the publishing community. So I don't have a problem if we put it in the contract, as you are suggesting, Mr. Deaton, but I want it very clear that any locations, any sightings will be clearly as a result of negotiations between the city and the publishers.
That's fine. That's fine. We just want the vehicle in order to purchase. I believe that the city, and I hope the newspaper industry, in certain historic areas and certain kinds of areas, that that might be an appropriate.
Can we make that a condition of, we'll make that a condition of the contract, that they be subject to approval or a bargaining process or a conference process.
We'll work out a process.
Between the publishers and the city. So I would so move, and we can take the language out then that says excluded from negotiations as far as the, as far as the contract is concerned.
Fine.
Also, I want to add that one of the important things that we took out in Plum was any freestanding signs. They are no longer part of any, any part of this contract. And I think with that in mind, I think that we can move forward.
That's one of the recommendations.
And I would suggest an I vote, as amended, as my amendment orally is. And I want to make sure the clerk gets that right, so we don't have another mistake on that. But that will state very clearly that on the news racks, they, news racks placement shall result only on, after concurrence between the city and the publishers, or conference or at least concurrence. Is that the right word? Do you want to use a different word there?
We'll speak with the adjournment.
You'll do it the way you wanted? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
I'll Deatonize it.
I just want, I just want everybody to understand that these things may not be appropriate in all locations, and there are some severe legal questions that can be raised with this. So I would urge approval as amended.
Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. That's now a second additional motion that's been brought in. We have multiple committee reports, so, Mr. Clerk, when it comes time for a vote, we're going to need your help keeping track of all the motions. Mr. Wax?
I appreciate what Mr. Pacheco was saying, and certainly within the districts in which the problem that he was addressing occurred, they would be given the highest priority in working with the council members of the district. But this is also a citywide program, and I think it's important to note that while the origins of this motion came from a very real problem in certain areas of the city, and fortunately, they will be addressed and long overdue, the potential benefits of this program are far greater. This is a, this is sort of a universal program. The benefits from properly designed and convenient street facilities, whether they be computer terminals, bus shelters, public toilets, kiosks, and others, are things that enhance the urban life in a great number of cities and are really great benefits to everybody. This isn't just for those people. This is for all people in different ways to be used where appropriate, based upon the neighborhood and the concerns. But I see great benefit in many areas of the city that don't have the specific problem Mr. Pacheco addressed, that all together make the whole program a success, financially feasible to have. There has to be some mechanism for paying for all of this and dealing with these issues in the way that these are. And I think that the entire citywide program, which can provide various benefits to various people in various areas, make up a whole program. And so I just want to make sure that while I agree with Mr. Pacheco's motion in terms of those areas in which that problem exists, that that not in any way take away from the fact that we're going to address this on a citywide basis in all the council districts, each working with the council members of the district and the neighborhood councils and all within their areas as to what's the appropriate mix. As you can see here, there are a wide range of types of things that can be placed in a community, and a total package ultimately has to be considered to make it economically feasible for both the city and the company, whichever one gets it putting in the, putting in the, in the facilities. So bravo for addressing that problem once and for all, but don't in any way think this is just limited to homeless people. It's not. As I saw many of these facilities in other cities that I visited, they were being used by everybody and welcomed, thank you very much, in a lot of the neighborhoods, because they were providing something that was, you know, really needed and not there. So look at it in that sense, and it's a great opportunity to enhance the street life for people all over the city.
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. President, I recognize the hard work that my colleagues have put into this and the hard work that many of the city staff have put into it, but I still have a number of concerns. And I say this even though I recognize that what Mr. Pacheco just pointed to is, I think, the only public policy imperative that I understand for us to be here today, which is the problem of public urination, the problem of homelessness. And I'm very sympathetic to those concerns. I'd like to see a program which addresses and is targeted in a manner that it addresses those particular public policy problems. But the proposal here today concerns me on a number of levels. I continue to have concerns about public safety, because I do believe that these facilities will in some way, shape, or form facilitate the commission of certain crimes, certain quality-of-life crimes that we ought not want to facilitate in our neighborhoods. And I think for that reason, it will be unpopular in certain neighborhoods. And I think that's a concern we need to address at the outset rather than later on. So that's one of my concerns. Another concern is visual blight. I mean, here we are in a city that, to this day, has not been able to get a handle on the billboard industry, on the problem of illegal billboards and illegal signage, and we are going down the road of two decades potentially of adding to visual blight and clutter. I'm not certain that that's wise. And so I guess I'm left with the question of why can't we be trying a pilot program? If this is worth so much to either Adshell or Infinity Deco, I know pilot programs have been done in other places, it's my understanding that something along the lines of a pilot program is underway in Chicago right now, why can't we do that here? And so those are my concerns. I would note, Mr. President, that there are members of the public, including an individual from Studio City and a representative of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, who've come here today. I don't believe they had a chance to comment previously during public comment, and so I would move to reopen the public hearing so that, for a limited period of time, so that they could have an opportunity to address these issues before us.
Colleagues, we have a motion to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second? Clerk, open the roll on reopening the public hearing. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen.
Well, reopen the public hearing. Mr. Weiss, did you wish to designate a, an amount of time?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. We have five cards. Let's do some math, one minute per person.
I guess there were two members of the public who were not here in any representative capacity. Those were the, I know there are lobbyists here.
If we reopen for one, we reopen for all. Council calls forward Jules Faire, to be followed by Mort Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Jules Faire, and I'm vice president of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. I would like to, first of all, say that many of the concerns that Mr. Weiss has mentioned, many of the concerns that I have for the council. I have been a volunteer at Mr. Faire's office for a number of years, and many of the activities that I've been involved with has been with issues of street furniture. I would like to also suggest the recommendation of using some of these pay toilets in areas such as the subway entrances where they need them very badly. One of my questions is downtown Los Angeles, in the area where you have a lot of homeless, these are pay toilets. How will they afford to pay to use these toilets? Have you addressed that issue? And of course, my biggest, one of my biggest questions is what about the security? What about graffiti? What about vandalism? What about illegal activities in these toilets?
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to conclude, and the staff to address your questions at the conclusion of public comment.
Okay, I had some more to talk about. Is that possible?
Thirty seconds. Or if you can submit something in writing, we'll gladly receive that as well, or communicate to your council member to ask the questions as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mort Allen, to be followed by Alonzo Wickers.
Morning. I'm Mort Allen from Studio City. I have some very serious concerns, which I think a lot of you know. I think it's very unfair, if not unconstitutional, when you set up an RFP that only two companies, Eller, Adshell, and Infinity, can bid on because they're billion-dollar companies. I mean, I happen to be involved in owning a very small billboard company, and we wanted to bid on part of it. We have seven regional planning commissions, area planning commissions, which was to divide up the city. And I see no reason why each community isn't allowed to do a bid on their own furniture and their own things. I think that another issue is the Ventura Boulevard corridor specific plan that we worked on for years, says there'll be no public advertising other than bus shelters. I think that if we're starting to put this in, unless you exactly strike out the 3,417 freestanding billboards that are included in this, I think the fact that they're only paying 20 percent instead of 50 percent, when they're going to be making hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars on this thing for some furniture, some stuff that they write off in the first year, I see no reason why you got a billion-dollar giveaway on this thing.
Thank you.
As far as the, one last thing, the toilets, I understand in New York, this company, I'm not sure, has a contract, and has only built one toilet. Now, I've been told by a retired executive DW of Public Works that our sidewalks will not handle these toilets because they're eight feet square, there's not enough room.
Thank you.
So I'd like to say guarantee that they build 150 toilets before they do anything else.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wickers, to be followed by Jerry Marnion.
Good morning, Alonzo Wickers. On behalf of the Coalition of Print Media, we've met with many of you here, and to express our concerns specifically about the modular news rack aspect of the Coordinated Street Furniture Plan, and we appreciate Councilman Burnson's motion. We would like it to go further, however, to fully separate the modular news rack We would like it to go further, however, to fully separate the modular news rack plan from the remainder of the street furniture plan. A couple of concerns. First of all, from a constitutional standpoint, the street furniture plan calls for large advertisements on the back of the modular racks. That raises strong constitutional issues. One of the reasons why the Atlanta Airport news rack ordinance was struck down last year by the federal court was because it called for the same kind of advertising panels on the back of the racks that you're looking at here in Los Angeles. In addition, as we discussed with council members Burnson and Misakowski at the Plum meeting, we are open to having a dialogue with the city and to working on some kind of pilot program in which the city, the city attorney's office, street services and the publishing community and neighborhoods would work together on this.
I'm going to ask you to conclude.
However, we would ask that it not be part of the RFP and that the racks not be purchased directly from Daco, but that the publishing community in fact would work with the neighborhoods and the city to purchase the racks.
Thank you. Mr. Marnian to be followed by Dave Lack. Mr. Lack will be our final speaker.
Good morning. My name is Jerry Marnian with the Los Angeles Times. And just to be brief, I agree with Mr. Wickers and his statements regarding the removal or separation of the news racks from the RFP. We willingly look forward to a dialogue between the city and the publishing community to establish a more comprehensive news rack ordinance that includes possibly in some locations, the modular news rack concept. But we believe and firmly and strongly believe that this should be something that's funded by the publishers and not part of a third-party contract with another company. So in concluding, I'd like to support that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lack.
Yes, my name is Dave Lack, US Daily Today Circulation Director. We're just here to lend our support to the local publishers here and we would like to deal directly with the city instead of going through a third party. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment on this particular item. I appreciate the speaker's brevity and apologize once again, but the public did have an opportunity to comment at the public hearing held in committee. Back to council members wishing to speak. The chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Council President, colleagues, it's a great opportunity for us to start looking at how we treat our transit-dependent corners. Throughout our city, we have corridors where folks are waiting for buses. But knowing that our public work schedules are pretty drawn, long cycles in how we clean the surfaces of our sidewalks, I want to just point out that perhaps in our negotiations, part of a de-nization of our vocabulary, that we include the surfaces of our sidewalks to be cleaned inasmuch as they're looking at the street furniture and the elements that are all around these particular sites. I know throughout the district, as far as, you know, on CD1 and other districts, when you look at the corners where the bus stops are at, they're black. They're thick, you know, people's feet get stuck on the floor because they're not being cleaned. And this is where the transit-dependent folks are congregating because that's the only way to get around. So I wanted to add in our discussion negotiations that the cycles of cleaning the sidewalks are shortened. And I might sound trivial, but I think it's important for the folks who are living there day-to-day, literally trying to get back and forth from their home to their jobs. But again, the sense of cleanliness is important. Desirability to come to these areas are going to be enhanced if we can at least have cleaner sidewalks around these areas.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you, as they say in sports programs, who are just tuning in, you might think that we're talking about couches on sidewalks when you hear "street furniture," which you can actually see in places like Hollywood, which is another matter, but we'll get those off the sidewalk. We're actually talking mostly, though there's other elements, about toilets today. I know it's a word that nobody wants to say that they're for or against, but we're speaking about toilets. And I can imagine the ribbon cutting. Maybe Joel, if you can come back to make sure we do this, that, you know, one of us actually goes into the toilet and then emerges victorious the day that these get put on the streets of Los Angeles. To address what Councilmember Weiss was speaking about, though, I think there are some public policy imperatives here. Having public toilets itself, regardless of who it serves, is, I think, a public policy imperative. Most great cities have them. It's something that I'm sure many of us and our partners or people that we know, our friends, struggle to find at times. This is going to be something that serves everybody. It does address, though, particularly a problem that faces the homeless population. I think there's still something that needs to be worked out, maybe in some council districts like Council District Nine and parts of 13th, what to do in terms of folks, whether a homeless person is going to spend the quarter to use that bathroom or whether they'll continue to use the street. I think that's something that we need to look at and nonprofits providing some sort of vouchers or tokens. Also, I think this is an opportunity to build community in this city. We have the opportunity, and I really do encourage in the negotiations, that we consider things like next bus technology to make sure that those who are transit-dependent can see things like other great cities like London have. When you're there in the London tube, you know it's two minutes till the next train is coming. We need that for folks that ride the buses every single day and we have opportunity to do that. I know Councilmember Reyes has talked about in a different context, the idea of community bulletin boards. I encourage us to use as much of the space in our negotiations to accomplish that, not just for signage, for commercial purposes, although I understand that's part of what building this is about. We also do need flexibility about where they are. I think a lot of people, as I went door-to-door, and it's not just something that comes from the central city versus the outer city, I think there are issues that work both ways. People really want to see this entire council get away from the rule of 15, where we're just going to put 10 in any council district of these 150 because we split everything equally. There's something that I'm going to give up to districts, but I would ask flexibility to make sure that my district, which is the most densely populated of any of ours, that we look at perhaps, because we also have a homeless population as well, having more in the 13th district or other appropriate districts. And lastly, I want to bring up some issues about labor. I really encourage that we make sure that whoever this goes to, that the maintenance is done by folks that are unionized. And I really would encourage reaching out to unions like SEIU 1877 to make sure that that happens. And I support completely what Councilman Burnson has added to this as well and making sure as well that we take care of some of the issues in the negotiations, looking at the malfunctions in San Francisco and some of the things that have been happening, to make sure that we can deal with that here. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I also rise in support of this project. You know, looking at the replicas of the street furniture, it's absolutely gorgeous and I look forward to seeing it implemented across this district. I do echo several of my colleagues' comments about clearly, as public policy, this is a great move on behalf of our city and those who are homeless. And I think we've waited a long time for this to come, but I also realize that this is part of a greater picture in really enhancing a lot of the other areas of the city. I agree, Councilman Garcetti, that we might need to look at the priorities in the city. And I'm one of those that likes to look at the big picture. However, in my district, I can see this having a huge advantage, not only for my, several of the downtowns in my community, particularly in San Pedro, we have a problem in downtown San Pedro of public urination and a lot of the businesses there are complaining that it really is impacting economic development and impacting what the bids are doing. So I see this as being a benefit there. But also, you know, one of my big priorities is develop our waterfront, our harbor area. I'm proposing miles and miles of a promenade where people can come down to the harbor and walk and bike. And I see something like this as being at the very cornerstone of the success of that kind of a place where people are going to be coming from all over the city to walk and bike along our harbor. So I'm looking forward to working, hopefully coming up with maybe some nautical design of a toilet. But I'm also concerned of the ability for the homeless to use this. I understand tokens are going to be a part of this. I'm already concerned, though, in terms of how we give out those tokens. Hopefully, you will be working with homeless providers in all areas of the district. I'm even interested in maybe thinking of businesses that might have some tokens that they would be able to give out in those situations. One more thing, I know my time's up. These are gorgeous, but as we all know, the first thing that happens is graffiti. The first thing that happens is trash. I understand there's a great maintenance component of this and I applaud that. However, there will be off-times where I want it to be so easy for members of the public to call a number. One of the things I've noticed on some of the Infinity kiosks is there's an 818 number and I would like to make sure that all these are 800 numbers visibly posted on all parts of the street furniture so anybody at any time can call about cleaning.
Before I call the next speaker, did staff wish to expand or give additional information not only on the tokens program, but graffiti abatement components? And anything else, other questions that have been raised?
The token program is being used in San Francisco and very successfully. It is also used by the homeless agencies and budding property owners that see the benefit of using the automated toilet. When we talk about graffiti, one of the issues that we spelled in the RFP was the importance of keeping a zero tolerance in graffiti because if you want something out there, you want to be clean all the time. That will be one of the main issues we deal in negotiation. You have people here that are very conscious of the maintenance requirements of all the street furniture. If we're going to have a world-class street furniture application, we want it to stay clean. Absolutely.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, I understand the need for toilets in specific areas of the city. And I know it took the city a number of years to come up with the toilets that are in the downtown area. And I have visited that downtown area as a pedestrian. I have walked those streets and I know how those toilets are not used but misused. And the smell that comes from those toilets, and I've seen toilets that have been tipped over, so clearly, some of the patrons who use those facilities, which were placed there for their convenience, are destroying them. But I do understand the need for that. However, we look at other areas of the city where we have visitors. We look at areas at the convention center. We look at areas along the Hollywood corridor where we have a lot of visitors, a lot of tourists, and we need a location for them to use a facility, other than a restaurant or some other public private facility. Councilman Wax came back from the East Coast and they have those and they're used successfully in the East Coast, they're used successfully in Europe. I don't think they'll be successful in the third district of the West San Fernando Valley. I just don't think we have that need in that particular community. But I know there's areas in the city where we do need those. I think that a 20-year contract is way too long for us to invest. I understand the needs of the company to regain their cost at $250,000 a unit, but we don't know if it's a proven commodity in our environment. So I would be opposed to the fact that 20 years is way too long to lock ourselves into a contract that we can't get out of. I totally support a pilot project. I think a pilot project is a successful way for us to experiment, to see if it is work, if it will work. I know that when the MTA line was building, the red line, they specifically did not put toilets in those facilities specifically because they didn't want the homeless to congregate. Now, if we want to put these above ground and have the homeless congregate there, but I look at the vision of the MTA and why they didn't put any toilets along that route. And if you look today, there are none along that route specifically. They don't want to attract problems. I heard recently on the news that San Francisco Police Department is having problems, and I don't know what kind of problems with these facilities. I'd like to explore that. I know that they not mentioned city inspectors. How many city inspectors will there be deployed to this operation? And I can't in good conscience support something for 20 years not knowing how it's going to work. And I would totally, completely support a project of a pilot. And I think we also need to separate the transit shelters from the toilets. I think we can rule on that, the street furniture in one area, but in good conscience, linking them together with a 20-year lockdown, to me, is excessive.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask the panel to highlight for those listening, the elements of the token program, because in the Ninth Council District, as you know, there's a significant issue regarding homeless and services to support those people who are on the street and are shelter-resistant. I view this as an opportunity not only to address that issue and to work directly with community-based organizations, but to serve tourists and those who are transit-dependent. The other issue I wanted to ask you is about vandalism, graffiti and something which is probably more familiar to myself and Mr. Reyes and those who serve in this part of the city and this side of the hill in etching, scratching into the surfaces, not just painting out of the surfaces, but taking sharp instruments and carving graffiti into metal and scratching paint off and whether the contractor has anticipated a response to that kind of problem.
I'll hold your time, Ms. Perry, while staff responds.
Christopher Westhoff, Assistant City Attorney. We saw those types of potent problems when we viewed the various facilities that we looked at in and around London where most of these facilities have been. The contractors, both of the contractors have very aggressive programs to address that. Obviously, if somebody really wants to do damage to a piece of property, it's going to be difficult to stop, but they have graffiti-resistant coatings. We're using metal in some instances, mesh instead of glass. And so there are ways that you can go about it, plus you just have to keep on top of the issue in terms of the maintenance. There are two ways to deal with the token program. In Europe, they seem to, they have a universal key, a key that they can put in and turn, which only the homeless and disabled people will have an opportunity to get a hold of. And the various countries have different names for that program. In San Francisco, they use basically a token, which you put it in and it comes right back out and opens the door so that you can reuse the same token and the tokens are very freely given out. This is, the toilet charge, the 25 cents or whatever, the 20 pence in London that they charge, this is not a revenue-generating concept, so the tokens are very freely available and will be available through whichever program we implement here in the city of Los Angeles. To respond to Mr. Zine's comment on the 20 years, every city and municipality that we discuss this with in the United States and in Europe, the minimum time is a 20-year contract because of the amortization of all of the equipment and the recovery of those capital costs that go into this. When we discussed it initially with the potential bidders and we had four or five potential bidders on this particular RFP, they all stated that 20 years was the minimum and some of them were looking for longer. The fact is, we only got two bidders and it was based on a 20-year contract and it's based on the ability to recover the cost and the amortization of 20, in this instance, 2,500 bus shelters, a minimum of 150 toilets and then the additional kiosks and computer terminals.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this has been a really good discussion and I think a lot of the issues that have been raised were addressed by the efforts of the staff, looking at this, going out and talking to other cities, other communities, to find out what was done. And I want to actually also commend Mr. Pacheco because he's right. This really started as a reaction to a problem and that is, as the city was going to pass the urination defecation ordinance, being told that we couldn't until we had some alternatives. So what started out as a proposal to provide facilities in areas which are needed for public, the city decided, well, why should we limit it to just toilet facilities? Why don't we take this creatively as an advantage to deal with all street furniture, our bus benches, our shelters, the possibility of kiosks? For some of the new members here, what you're going to find and think what we see in the city, something that doesn't look very nice in our city are our news racks. We do not have a standard and an ability to control them. And you've heard today, the majority of the people who testified were the news media saying, "Don't mess with our news racks." And yet, I think we should mess with their news racks because I think they're one of the ugliest parts of our city's street environment today. And I think that what I agree with Mr. Burnson said, let's not make this a mandatory part of the contract, but as Plum did recommend, let's fold it in as a pilot to talk with the news media, to find those nice kind of kiosks where the news media can have availability of street sales, but the city and the public and the neighborhoods get the benefit of some equality, aesthetic quality, some uniformity, some kind of, as they say, aesthetic environment. What this also requires is that the successful bidder work with communities, work with council houses. Some areas, as we've heard, have a high dependency of not only the shelters and perhaps the toilets and others. Some other neighborhoods may have different kinds of requests. We have historic districts. We have specific planned scenic districts. All of this can be accommodated. And even in San Francisco, where we're seeing, you know, the streetcar one, when you go to San Francisco, they have other models for other neighborhoods. Up around the museum, they have a very contemporary, modern one that looks like the contemporary, modern museums. This program is attempting to do it all, but as a consequence, we have to do it very, very cautiously, bring the contract back. very cautiously, bring the contract back, work with what will be some initial steps, a pilot-like program where they will roll out in some communities, and we will have the advantage of looking at it. And as I think critical to the success of this, as was indicated, is high level of enforcement, paying a fee for the city enforcers, as well as an obligation on the applicant to be enforcing themselves, to be as much as can be possible, modernized, self-cleaning in the toilet area, and then also dealing, as Mr. Wax said, really informative, giving community a place, sort of a community bulletin board, where information, not only in the community, but to tourists in and around the community have access to that information. So I think it's an exciting opportunity. I'd like to move forward with it, obviously cautiously, obviously looking very, very closely at all those details. But I think, as we've had around the discussion today, all those details have been put into the proposal, and now we just need to see that contractually, that's what comes out and how we manage it.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I wanted to ask, and I'm going to ask Mr. Deaton and the staff, aside from the news racks that will be provided under this contract, and the locations to be, and I presume the type of news rack that are covered under this contract, I would presume the publishers will have, publishers of various publications, and I'm sure, but I just want to ask the question openly, will have the right to place their own news racks wherever they so desire. Is that correct?
Right. This contract will not change any of that. The only thing that this action today will allow us to purchase news racks if it is, if we work out how we're going to do that.
Who will we purchase the news racks from? From this company or what?
Yes, right. It just allows us not have to go out to bid at a future time.
Does it require us to buy news racks from them?
No, no.
It just allows us to buy news racks?
Allows us, it's permissive.
Are we going to have, are we going to have a word or a voice in the design of those news racks?
Sure.
And would the publishers also be part of that discussion?
As you've so indicated.
Okay, you know, I did not fully understand what the publishers wanted originally. They wanted actually a separate contract where they, where this, where we did not have a program and to start basically over with this.
Right, then we even have to go back out to bid and the whole bunch.
Yeah, so that's not, that was not, I think, what the intention of, was this. But I want to, I just wanted to assure them that they are going to be part of the process. They're not going to be shut out. They're going to be part of the process in design, location, and certainly, they have the right to place their own news racks aside from this any place they so desire. Correct?
Well, there is an ordinance in place.
Well, but what do the courts do with the ordinance, you know?
Okay.
So anyway, the point is that, you know, this is not going to place toilets on every street corner. It's going to place them, hopefully, where they're needed. I am concerned that they may not get, be placed in places where they're most needed because of the financial purposes of the advertisement that goes with these news racks, but, I mean, with the toilets. So I would hope that we're going to have the ability to require that toilets be placed in areas that the city establishes as priority. As Mr. Zine said, I doubt there's going to be very many in the 3rd District, probably very few in my district, but there may be locations, such as near the college, near the shopping center, near the railroad. We have two train stations, though it seemed to me that those would be appropriate. And I might add, the reason that the MTA did not place toilets in the North Hollywood Station was not because of anything other than the fact that they were concerned about crime. These were in the building underneath, and they decided not to do it because they had no control, it would be very difficult to police, they were concerned about crime, not about making them available for the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnson, just to answer your question, there will be no actual advertising that we're aware of on the toilets themselves, so the advertising will not drive the location of the toilets. It is the advertising on the bus shelters and on the kiosks which will support the payment for the toilets. So the toilets will be placed in locations that will be decided by the city council and Department of Public Works and staff.
Seems to me that I saw some diagrams and pictures and so forth.
What you see are public service announcements and maps that are on the toilets?
Only, in other words, there will be no advertisement on the toilets.
Correct.
Well, that should give us some assurance.
It's a little harder to sell advertising on a public convenience than it is on a bus shelter.
Well, somebody said something about bulletin board. I was a little concerned when Cindy mentioned that the public toilets are going to be the site of our bulletin boards.
If this continues, we'll have to go in a closed session.
If you go to San Francisco, what San Francisco has are maps of the area where the toilet is, so that people can find their way, and other public service announcements on the other side of it as well.
The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
What's the length of the contract that San Francisco signed with these, and which one did he sign with? With Atchel or was it Infinity? Or both?
The city of San Francisco has signed a 20-year agreement with J.C. Deco.
And how long has that been in effect?
Since 1994.
1994, seven years. Any complaints?
We've spoken with staff for the city of San Francisco, and there were a couple of issues, but they negotiated very satisfactory solutions to those problems, and they're so happy with the program that now they're trying to expand the program and install additional toilets.
And they install them in generally what neighborhood? Upper class, where the population density is high or?
They've installed them in various areas, including homeless areas, business districts, the wharf, visitor areas.
All right, so you've studied it, you've been up there to take a look?
Yes.
Saw it with your own eyes?
Yes.
You used the facility. Was it clean?
Very.
Okay, well, they knew you were coming?
No, actually, we went with the company, but then we went out on our own, when they didn't know where we were going. And we checked them out.
But you knew where you were going?
We knew where we were going.
All right, fine. Now, the Infinity program is, is that the whole table?
The Infinity model...
Will they explain to us, a part is Infinity and part is?
This half is Infinity Deco.
And the other part is what?
Atchel.
What's Atchel? How would I know it's Atchel?
The ones in the acrylic cases.
Okay, fine. So when are they, well, you see a little better than I do with contacts lenses on. Now, my question is, you got 60 days to negotiate with Infinity, come to some agreement, correct?
That's right.
And then if that fails, then you go Atchel. But let me just comment on the news racks. I think there should be a total separation. Whoever you negotiate with and they win, they ought to have control over what news rack should be there, they're going to advertise on that news rack. You say that the newspaper companies have an opportunity to participate in the process. I think they'd be limited, they have limited contribution in that regard. If you, if they're going to have the final word, then give them a final word and then have for the total separation. What you'll find is that either one of these companies is going to charge a newspaper a fee for providing the news rack for them to distribute their newspaper. So I want to give the...
No, all we need, all we're asking for is the ability in the contract to purchase the news rack. It does not require us to do anything...
But you're going to purchase for whom? You're going to sell it to the newspaper company?
Or will provider, that can be determined in the future, but this, I don't want to have to have the city to go back out to bid if we want...
What you want is maybe not be just what's right. I don't want the newspaper to be burdened with whatever complex program that Infinity or the other, Atchel, would put to them.
If it turns out that way, we don't have to go that route. It's an option, not a requirement.
I think it's going to be ultimately, finally, that they should separate the two.
Well, that may eventually happen, but I don't think we need to do that right now.
Mr. Holden, I'll ask you to push your button again. Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Just had one question regarding existing small entrepreneurs who have news racks right now on their, in different locations and corners. I like in Chinatown and parts of Westlake, you have whole families that have been in certain spots for generations, you know, been able to sustain their families through that entrepreneurship. So I want to make sure that was in the radar, to protect some of the folks that are already in the neighborhoods that are basically...
The news stands?
Yes, or news racks. I'm just looking at the models here, and you see this news rack.
There are some news stands that will be provided in either this forum that is in front or the taller kiosk. Those can be converted into news stands, and people with existing news stands will have the opportunity to utilize this equipment. However, this is not going to go all over the city of Los Angeles, so it will not, this will be only in areas where it is appropriate for the news stands to be. The news racks themselves are all owned by the publishers, where you put your coins in or you get a free publication. There is an ordinance that will be brought back to this council that will deal with the news racks comprehensively, that, and the council will have an opportunity to debate that extensively.
We will set up a process to make sure that we're not putting somebody out of business with a news stand.
Thank you.
Nobody will be.
Mr. Wax.
Mr. President, members of council, I agree with Ms. Sikowsky. This really has been a good discussion, and I think for those who have expressed concerns, they're legitimate concerns, I think that as you get into this, you'll find, for the most part, they have been addressed, both in terms of maintenance and cleanliness, the availability of tokens to, and other issues. In fact, the ones I visited were extraordinary in their maintenance. It's not only that the toilet flushes, for example, but it's a mechanism almost as if the entire facility went through a car wash. The basin goes under, the floors are washed, the dryer comes and dries them. It's almost as if you had a car washed and cleaned completely, and the maintenance of them is really quite extraordinary. I think that the issue here of, we won't want any of these in our areas, we'll want them in the others, I think you're going to find that this is a convenience that people all over the city will have. People, last time I was in the West Valley, people there had to go to the restroom just as often as people in other parts of the city did. And, you know, if they're designed right and they're run right and all, if they're good enough for the Champs-Elysees, they're certainly good enough for Ventura Boulevard. So I think you're going to find what the people here who have expressed, those who have expressed possibilities of this are really right on. Ms. Han, Mr. Garcetti and all have, I think, begun to see how these can really be an asset and an improvement and an enhancement in each of the communities, each different in some degree, but each tailored to that particular community and its needs. And the reason that they're tied together, Mr. Zine, is basically, almost it's economics to a great degree. The toilets are not a revenue-generating thing, but they are extraordinarily costly. And the more that you maintain them, the more that you guarantee, for example, that they are maintained every single day, zero-tolerance spaces, kept clean, kept safe, kept secure, the more money you incur in the cost, something has to pay for that. And the city has unfortunately never been willing to come forward and pay for it where it's needed. This total program, where you finally have other facilities that will provide other benefits in areas where appropriate, will help provide the revenue to pay for the very costly toilets and the kind of maintenance each of us is going to insist occurs, so that we avoid the problems that have rightly been raised. Likewise, the computer information terminals, it's not exactly a revenue-generating thing for government to be able to have interactive communications with its citizens on issues before the city government and the community. Something will have to, again, pay for these things. And the other, fortunately, the other things which also serve public needs, such as bus shelters, properly maintained, news racks, flower kiosks and others, can be revenue-producing. And so you look at the total picture of all of the things to come up with a revenue stream that makes the whole thing possible. You really have to tie it in in order to give everybody the flexibility to make sure that the toilets are where the greatest need for the toilets are.
Mr. Wax.
And that the other things are there as well. So this, I think, is well thought out, and in conclusion, we have it coming back here because these issues are going to have to be addressed satisfactorily to all the council members before it's signed, and that will be hopefully in 60 days.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Staff was able to obtain from me the February 20th San Francisco Chronicle article on the project in San Francisco, and in there, in that article that was published, stated that a quarter of the toilets are vandalized, used for sex, drugs and camping, that the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco will hold hearings to explore the contract and maintenance practices, and that the San Francisco Police Department has asked that at night, at certain locations, Civic Center, Larkin and O'Farrell, Mission and Six, that they close those and not be open 24 hours a day, and that in Skid Row, because people camp inside so frequently, hardly anyone else uses them, that they be removed. Can you comment on that? This article from San Francisco Chronicle regarding the situation? And one more thing I'd like to add, is you take $150 million over the 20-year span, that gives 7.5 million a year to the city of Los Angeles. That is less than what we would consider a substantial amount of money for any type of improvement, but when we span it over 20 years, obviously, it sounds like a lot of money, $150 million, but it comes out to 7.5 million per year. If you could respond to those questions, please.
Actually, in discussing with the city of San Francisco, my understanding is they're having hearings to expand the program this week. I don't know about the article, but in discussions with the people who administer the program, they've indicated that they're moving ahead, they're expanding and they're satisfied. There's always going to be problems. I think that if you, quite frankly, if you had parks, you could make the same argument that they should be closed because of drugs and prostitution and camping. I think the difficulty here is, is trying to provide a service in areas that need a service, do it in a clean and as efficient possible. I think that we will, obviously, if we're a location, the police department, and it's causing a crime problem, we're going to have to address that. But to, I don't know where the 25% came from, and I find it difficult to believe that if the 25% was true, San Francisco would be considering expanding the program. So I read the article just a few minutes ago, but our conversations with San Francisco are entirely different. And long before we did this RFP, I used the facilities in Union Station and also on the mall in front of San Jose, in San Jose Civic Center, and discussed with those people the difficulties with maintaining it, and there are problems. I mean, it's a mechanical device, and they have to, they're running from one place to the next to do that. But in both cases, I was able to use it, and it cost me a quarter, and it worked out fine. And didn't meet anybody inside that I didn't think was appropriate.
The representatives, do you have any comment on that San Francisco situation?
Actually, the San Francisco units, and we visit, as we indicated earlier, a lot of them, and there were areas that the city made a determination that they would restrict the hours of use, because the community felt that was an appropriate use. In certain areas, the Tenderloin area of San Francisco, there was one unit there that they had increased the maintenance four to six times a day because of the amount of use, the type of use. So they're well aware of the communities they serve. To say that there wasn't any issues, there were, and what they did is have the contractor adjust the times and the service level to make sure they eliminated as most as possible.
I know there's going to be problems, and my concern is that they be resolved satisfactorily for the communities where those are located. Have any been requested, have there been any requests to remove any of the facilities in San Francisco and any of the districts that they're established?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
In fact, there was an argument about getting more toilets. I think that's the reason why they're going out. So many of the communities found the benefit where they could adjust the hours, adjust the maintenance, and they seen the benefit, because there isn't that many public toilets around.
And I think that's our concern, at least my concern, is the practical approach, that if you have them at the Civic Center, if you have them at the convention center, if you have them outside Staples or whatever where crowds congregate, give people a facility to use, which will have that turnover, but when we're talking about disrupting communities and make them worse than they are now, for example, the Skid Row District, that's a concern I have. The law enforcement issue, and Mr. Deaton, if you can answer this, is it possible to bring in the police department, to have them a part of the negotiations, if in fact the contract is awarded, to have them a part to make sure that those crime issues are addressed?
Not necessarily part of the negotiations, but I think part of the citing, I think that the, as a department, relative to where we're going to put them and how we're going to locate them, those kinds of things, I think that would be an appropriate place for the police department to be involved, and I would think that would be a good idea.
Mr. Zine, I'll ask you to push your button again.
Can I ask one more question, Mr. President? As I understand, what's before us today is to approve this concept.
Right.
And then from there, there will be negotiations that will take place, where we will iron out the specifics, such as bringing the police department to make sure that those locations, maybe the hours will be restricted at certain locations and not others, and then also that each council district will decide, the council representative in that district, will decide whether they're going to be at those specific... whether they're going to be at those specific, in their specific districts or not. And it's not going to be addressed by some other entity of government, but the council member will have that final say whether they go in those districts or not? Or will it be Mr. Deaton's decision?
Let me think.
Councilman Deaton. Excuse me.
I think we will work out a process that will be satisfactory to each council member that their, their input's being provided.
That, that will what?
That the input is being provided.
Thank you.
I, I think that we'll work out, we have a process, and let us share it with you. I think it involves a lot of the city departments, bids and community groups, et cetera, and if the council wants it, the final decision for each member in each district, that I think we can probably do that. But let me explain the process that we're involved in and then, and we'll bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
There is a God.
We have four members still waiting to speak.
My assumption is that they were going to make the same motion. If not, the motion stands.
Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
Previous question passes. Mr. Clerk, your help on the number of items before us?
We have two amending motions that have brought forward. Mr. Burnson had his motion to include a process for concurrence of the city and publishers regarding modular news rack placement. And you also have 22A, which is Pacheco motion to set a high priority for locating facilities in areas with high concentration of homeless people. So appropriate vote would be 22B first, which is the Burnson motion.
Clerk, please open the roll on item 22B, the Burnson motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That motion is approved.
Then 22A, which is the Pacheco motion.
Clerk, please open the roll on 22A. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now you have the matter before you. A motion is required inasmuch as there's two reports on the file. There's-
Committee report.
Public Works Committee report has been moved and is before us. Clerk, please open the roll.
Public Works report as amended.
As amended, correct. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
That item is approved as amended. Mr. Pacheco.
First of all, colleagues, thank you for the support, but I also wanted to recognize Lyndon Zawa from the CLA's office for working so hard on this project. Thank you so much. And Bob.
Bob Kennedy.
And Chris. Chris. Bob Kennedy and Chris Vasco and Victor. Thank you so much for working so hard on this.
Fourth with on that, Mr. President.
Fourth with on that item. Next item, please.
Mr. President, not on the agenda is Special One. It's a motion brought forward by Mr. Holden, seconded by Ms. Miskowski. Findings need to be made.
Has that item been distributed?
It has.
Okay. Ms. Miskowski, did you wish to speak on Special One?
Oh.
We need to find, make the findings for-
I believe this is, this is Mr. Holden's motion, and the only thing, this is the one to assert jurisdiction on a planning matter in CD 10, and I was happy to second it for Mr. Holden with the caveat that we not act per the final resolution today, but send the matter to committee. Mr. Burnson has indicated that he would hold this in committee next week and bring it into council next week Wednesday. So this is a planning matter where the Area Planning Commission did not act on the appeal on the matter that Mr. Holden feels is appropriate, so we are looking to assert jurisdiction.
Mr. Burnson, did you wish to speak on the findings or on the item itself?
No, I think Cindy expressed what I was going to say. We need to act today to take consideration, and we'll take it to committee and we'll cave it back here next Wednesday before the full council.
Clerk, please open the roll on the findings for Special One. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Colleagues, Special One is now before us. Anybody wishing to speak on the item itself? The motion says to send the item to committee or to assert jurisdiction and send it to committee. We need to, but we need to take a vote on that, Mr. Burnson. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
So we have now asserted jurisdiction on that item, and it is referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
And scheduled for return to council next Wednesday.
Next item, please. Mr. President, now is the time for public comment. It's the public comment segment of our agenda where we receive comment from members of the public on items not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Leonard Rose Jr.
Leonard Rose, here. I got one letter for the city council in the Lot de Plante, and it's, wrote him an email, and then he wrote me back to Leonard, to Leonard, that thank you for that card. Leonard, I appreciate your kind work. You have helped the city council with problems, is concerned over three years, and your hard work doesn't go unnoticed. Next year, I'm planning to run the city council, maybe you will help me. Talk to you soon. And he has been a police officer, 14 years in LAPD, and he worked with young kids in the building and youth center in city, city Lot de Plante, and it's cost $2 million. And they're going to have a skateboard, like you guys have in a skateboard in Los Angeles. And I'm going to go to City Hall, Lot de Plante, tonight, make a speech about the board and safety program, and, and they're going to hear a good speech. And I've been going to LA Board of Supervisors, School District and Police Department, LAPD, going around and sharing my testimony, and I received a thank you note from Senator Bob Boxer, Dan Feinstein, and Lieutenant Governor, and, and many others, Board of Supervisors, they send me thank you note to make our city a place to live. And I'll have to get the address of the Jim Han. I'm going to mail him a big packet of letters, I make all the speech and, and videotape about happening on young people-
Thank you.
Thirty-minute videotape. I'll have to get the address in Las Vegas this week, and he gets-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the public comment period for today's agenda. Clerk, next item.
Motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
The dust is clear.
No housekeeping today, eh? Any adjournment requests? All members, please rise. Mr. Burnson.
Yes. Members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Rebecca Katz. She is the mother of Sarah Katz, who serves on the Metrolink Board of Directors and also Orange County Transportation Commission, and also active in SCAG and other organizations in the region. Her mother was born in New York in 1920. She was granted the first PhD degree with an emphasis on Portuguese literature offered by UCLA. A research associate at the UCLA Center for Medieval and Renaissance Studies, she devoted most of her academic efforts to the studies of the works of the Portuguese 16th-century navigator and adventurer and writer Fornio Mendez Pinto. She's survived by her loving husband Boris, son Robert, daughters Judith, Dinah and Sarah, and 10 grandchildren.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. Nan Tran, who was born in Vietnam and moved here in 1975. She died last Thursday at the age of 78. She's survived by eight children, 14 grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. One of her grandchildren is my field deputy Viet Tran.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask my colleagues to join with me in adjourning today in honoring, in honor of the memory of Mr. Stefan Wells and his nephew, 11-year-old Jerry Rios Jr. You might have remembered, this was the incident two Sundays ago when his family was on a family vacation up in Maro Bay, and there was an argument over an available campsite, which resulted in the shooting of Stefan and his 11-year-old nephew, Jerry Rios, and found out that Stefan was a carpenter and a member of the carpenters' union. But one of the real tragedies of this, of course, was it was witnessed by his wife, Betsy. So I just ask that we all join in adjourning today in their honor and memory.
Mr. Holden?
Unanimous.
Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.